I hope he is here.
Good evening and welcome to the Ferguson City Council meeting for August the twenty-sixth at seven o'clock P M. At this time, I call the meeting to order. Let us stand for a solemn prayer and the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mark Pittman, could you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Noah, here. Councilwoman Covington, here. Councilwoman Cassoff, here. Councilwoman Franklin, here. Councilwoman Palmer, here. Councilwoman Williams, here. Mayor Jones, here. A quorum is present. At this time, I-
Adam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move public comment to after new business but before miscellaneous.
We did discuss that about moving it and we kind of determined that it would be good staying right where it is. So, Councilman Palmer has a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second. Let me go Covington.
Oh, you second me?
Yep.
Questions?
I'd like to hear the rationale for doing that. I haven't heard any discussion of this yet.
I think it'd be helpful, for one, to calm tempers. The purpose of these meetings is not to grandstand or to get into arguments or fighting. The purpose is to get the business of the city done. There's also been complaints in the past that it's hard for us to address people and address things that are going on. You know, we speak during the meeting after they've already done public comments. So oftentimes, there's concerns from the residents due to the business of the meeting that they can't talk about until two, three, four weeks from now. So my thoughts are, it will calm tempers, but also it'll allow people, the public, the right to speak after we've gone through the business of the meeting. And they can actually ask questions that are relevant to the things that have happened within the meeting today and not have to sit on those for two or three weeks.
Discussion.
I mean, the counterpoint to that, of course, is that if we have a second reading of something, then the public comment wouldn't be until after we voted on it.
Exactly.
Which would be, which would defeat the purpose of their public comment. So it's, I understand, I mean, it's unfortunate that people make their comment and walk out the door. But I have, if we're gonna listen to public comment, if we have to have the public comment before we do the business.
That's right.
Do we not?
Yeah, I agree.
State law doesn't even require public comment.
True.
Um, I take it that we not look up in the charter and see that moving it around is not conducive?
I don't know if you looked at the charter, that it was not conducive, but I can take a look real quick to see exactly where it is in the charter, because I know you all have moved it around before, so.
I don't think the charter prohibits that.
No, I don't. Ryan, would you take a quick look for me, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Because we did speak about moving it. City manager, I think you and I spoke about this, and one time we did move it to where Councilman Palmer suggested, and they still-
Yeah, so I know when Jeff Bloom was here, it was moved around quite a bit. And I believe that they found out that it was better to have it beforehand than after. Um, but I don't know the rationale why that, but I do remember it being at the end, and then they moved it to the beginning.
Okay. Yes, councilwoman, no.
You know, if people can't control themselves, then the mayor knows how to control the crowd. You know, we're asking that everyone does control themselves so that we can get through this meeting and handle city business. But public comment is city business, because we're here for the city. So I just think we need to have the public comment. Everyone, respect the three minutes, please, so we can move forward and have a productive meeting. Thank you.
Councilwoman Covington, then Councilman Franklin.
Okay, so my reason for agreeing is because some of these meetings go really, really long. And the people that make a comment, they leave before you can even address their comments. Since I've been on here, I mean, I didn't hit my bedtime a couple of times, and there's some older people. So that was my reason for agreeing. That way, it's fresh, also in our head. And if somebody is addressing something to us that we can go ahead and write afterwards, talk about, instead of waiting till the two, three hours after we debate over other things. So that was my reason for agreeing.
Councilman Franklin.
I would just ask the council, when you have these type of ideas that you share with the group, uh, this is the first I'm hearing of this, and so I have to question the motive, because if it's a good idea, you know, no one mentioned it to me. And so, kind of reminds me of when you tried to cut funding and reallocate it elsewhere at the end of a budget meeting. So like, just be transparent with your ideas. If it's a good idea, I'll support it. But as it stands now, I'm blindsided, so I have to question the intent.
Councilman Cassoff.
There's, there's no reason to question anybody's motive here. He didn't tell me about it either, okay? And we're supposed to be the Bob C. Twins up here, right? I didn't know about this either. Um, I think, I think it's worth council having a conversation about this. But, but I feel like we need to have a more extensive conversation than we're gonna be able to have this evening. Um, Councilor Palmer, would you object to tabling this and discussing it between now and the next meeting?
Uh, City Manager Hampton, is there any business on tonight's agenda that is essential that be completed?
You only got two second readings.
The ordinance readings, the first and then the second ordinance.
Okay.
But, but we not gonna act before tonight?
No, they not. I hope not, for their sake. City clerk.
You have the, you have the second reading, though, of bill number seventy-three fifteen.
Okay.
Um, for financial disclosure.
Okay.
We actually have to get that into the Missouri Ethics Commission prior to September fifteenth. So that's the one thing that is gonna be-
We'll get it done.
We'll get it done. Okay.
One other thing, Mayor. We do have the presentation tonight, uh, from Kurt Sherkins, uh, from St. Louis County, that we will have to get through as well, because that does reflect on all the first reading.
And we have the prosecuting attorney Robert here to make observations, so.
Yeah, so if we have any questions on bill seventy-three fourteen, prosecutor is here tonight.
Ryan, did you find anything in?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, in the code of ordinance, as chapter two dash twenty-eight of elementary parliamentary procedure, um, subsection B, it says, "The order of business of the council should be as follows: While meeting order will call, the petition, the request, and hearing of any person or group desiring to address the council."
Okay, that's public comments. So that's what the charter states. You heard what the charter states. Are you ready to vote? I'll take the caller role, please.
Aye.
Councilwoman Williams.
Aye.
No.
Councilwoman Covington.
Aye.
Um, give me, I'm just looking at the ordinance to see if we can even do this.
Yes, I don't think we can.
So, according to two dash twenty-eight, as the attorney pointed out, the third item of business prior to, prior to public hearings, consent agenda, and so on, uh, and reading of bills, the third order of business must be public comment, according to our ordinance. So I, I, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say nay on changing it this evening, because I believe it's unlawful. Um, but I'm willing to have a conversation. It is within our right to amend section two. That's not part of the charter. That's merely an ordinance. So if we want to amend the ordinance to allow flexibility in the future, I'm willing to have that discussion. But I'm, I, I'm gonna vote nay on making a change that I believe is unlawful this evening.
Daniel Swirp?
Here, Ms.
No.
Councilman Franklin.
Mm-hmm. No.
We will move, as proceeded with public comments. Uh, Councilman Williams, you, uh, ask for the floor.
All right, so I've apologized several times, but a lot of you guys were not in the special session. So I wanna, for my gesture, I wanna apologize to the people who support me, uh, the people who voted for me, uh, city staff, the council, and the city as a whole, because that can be perceived as an embarrassment to the city and the people who live here. Um, that, that's pretty much it. I just wanna apologize, but I wanna let people know who probably don't come to the council meetings a lot. This has been going on for months. This is not a one-time incident that happened. And, you know, I just lost my cool, but, you know, the Bible says, "He without sin cast the first stone." Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Williams, and I do accept your apology. Anyone else? Let's move on. Uh, the next item on the agenda is public comments. I take your, has a timer there. You get three minutes. When your timer go off, you are to stop speaking and return to your seat. If you continue to speak, I will call a point of order. And a point of order is for conduct and language. We can look it up in Robert Rules of Orders if you need it. I would sound the gavel. If you persist, I will instruct the city manager to instruct the chief of police to have you move from this chambers per ordinance. We got it? I will repeat it. You got three minutes. When, when the timer go off, you are to stop speaking and return to your seat. If you persist on talking, I will call a point of order and sign and hit the gavel. If you still persist, I will ask the city manager to get the police department to escort you out per the decorum order of the city. Octavia, who do we have as number one?
First, we have Henry Iwonafo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Henry Iwonafo. Good evening to the citizens, the elected official, the city officials, city attorney. I came in here today with a sense of humor, but some of the stuff was already solved. If I, the mayor and the council were very eloquent in making it clear that they're not interested in restricting our First Amendment right. And it's, the sense of humor is that our system of government was created in a way that it requires noise. It came from England, and we borrowed it from England. If you watch the English Parliament, you see them yelling at the prime minister, the opposition party yelling at the prime minister. I've been an elected official, and also I'm an educator, so I came in here with something Madison wrote. And Madison wrote this in seventeen, uh, seventeen ninety-one. And he borrowed it from the Magna Carta, which was published in twelve fifteen. And the English Bill of Rights was created in sixteen eighty-nine. That was after the common people killed the king. People don't know about, you know, how you have the House of Commons, because the English law is what we inherited. People have a right to speak to the elected official. And the First Amendment talks about, it says, "The First Amendment, uh, ensures that individual can express their opinion and ideas without government control or censor." People shouldn't come over here and call your mother's name or say anything to you that is offensive. But they may have some, every, all of us don't have the same level of education, same level, same savvy, but they can express their concerns to the elected officials. The mayor said something that was correct. When she says stop, you need to stop, and she can remove that particular individual. But to create a rule, because I saw something earlier, I don't know, I'm glad you guys, and I'm moving on. Where you can punish somebody, remove them, they cannot come here again. We have to think about our laws. We have a constitution. And we also have, your attorney can tell you what a supremacy clause is. The constitution supersedes the laws that you make here. So you cannot take our freedom. David had, David should not be harassed every day or night. Neither should David, uh, say something offensive to somebody. Your right ends where mine begins. So what I'm saying today, I'm happy with what I saw with the council, addressing the issue the way it's supposed to be, work together. But at the same time, we should respect the concerns of our citizens. Thank you for the time. I think my time is almost over. The other question I have is, um-
Point of order.
Okay.
Larry Robinette.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Um, I'd like to address what I believe to be the problem stemming from the out of order on July the twenty-second. So, Mayor, I want you to know I heard what you just said. My opinion, five and a half years is a bit late to start enforcing the rule. Some of the people sitting behind me have been allowed to repeatedly go significantly over their three minutes, to abuse the people sitting up here on this dais multiple times, to speak out of turn and out of order with no consequences other than a tap of the gavel for five and a half years. This should have been enforced a long time ago. Councilman Williams isn't the first one to be put in that position and have an altercation with a resident that was out of line. There have been other council people that have suffered the same consequences. My question is, are you gonna stand behind what you said today? Because I think, Mayor Jones, the responsibility lies with you to govern this meeting and run it respectfully and make sure that you use your powers to remove people when they don't follow the tap of the gavel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adrian Shropshire.
Hello, Mayor.
Hello.
Hello, citizens. Hello, council. Um, I wanna talk about my planning and zoning meeting that I had, that I chaired. It was very emotional for me. Mr. Cordell Beach is the grandfather of the children that were, uh, lost their lives in the fire here in Ferguson, and their mother. I know everybody has mixed opinions on that, but to hear a grandfather talk about losing his four grandkids, it was very, it really made me think as a grandfather, a parent, and a city chairperson of planning and zoning. We didn't really know. We thought it was a community garden, but to my embarrassment, it was a flower garden and a memorial on that property, which has been okayed by the owner. She's not gonna build another house on that property. And it was really tough to hear him talk about his loss and just still the emotional scars that he is carrying. It really affected me, because I've been thinking about it now for the last week or so since we had our meeting. I'm asking the council to give him, or give the lady that owns the property, the property line adjustments, so he can make that a memorial for his family and for us citizens to come and just sit and reflect about what happened that day. There's not gonna be a house built on the land. There's not gonna be anything done. The property owner's gonna keep the, um, the garage for her car. So I'm just asking you to reconsider and pass the, uh, special building line adjustment. And moving on, I wanna say to Ms. Octavia, we're gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss you, because we worked hand in hand with the, um, Juneteenth for the last few years. And I'd like for you to come up. I have a special presentation for you. Please.
It's okay.
I wanna award you with one of my cactuses. I'm a hobbyist. And a lot of citizens have seen them on Facebook. I've played a lot on there. And I want you to have this in my appreciation of what you've done for the city.
Next, we have Laverne Mitchum.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Um, Councilwoman Franklin, I wanna thank you. I was one of your constituents who talked to you about the, um, July twenty-second. I had family call me and was worried whether I was here and worried if I could get hurt. Um, I had family and friends who asked, "What is wrong with Ferguson? What's going on?" I agree with everything you have said tonight as far as, uh, amending and the ordinance, keeping our police from being put in a position that we don't want them in, like what happened in St. Louis. I agree with you one hundred percent, and I appreciate you. I want you to know that. I have come before this council several times and said, "You all are held to a higher standard." I have said that. I don't say it to insult you. I don't say it to fight with you. I say it because it's the truth. I have worked as a counselor in a desegregation program for forty years. And most of you know, we had St. Louis City students transferred to the county. We used to have bus drivers would get mad at kids who were being disrespectful, who were doing wrong. But there was a policy set up to handle when kids were doing wrong. But some of the bus drivers would cuss the kids out. They ain't got no home training. Their mamas ain't taught them nothing. That would make the kid get even angrier, and it would escalate. We had to tell the bus drivers, "You're an adult. You're held to a higher standard. You can't get on the level of the child and start cursing the child out because he cursed you out." You go into the principal, you take the ride up and say, "This child did such and such." The principal will call the parent and have a serious discussion that they may lose their right to ride the bus if they continue misbehaving. I've said to you all, in my career, I've had people say some horrible things. I knew they were wrong, but I had to maintain my professionalism to do my job. And, uh, Councilwoman Palmer, what you suggested tonight, and this is just me, I don't know if it's anybody else, it sounded like you wanted a way to control us. Put in public, we wait for these meetings to come and express our concerns about this city and about us. We wait to come here and express our concerns.
Ms. Mitchum, your time is up.
Thank you.
Mildred Klein.
Good evening, Mildred Klein, seventy-four forty-four Castro Drive. So, thank you. I'm offended already because, uh, Councilman Palmer said we're grandstanding. And this is the time that the citizens, where we can use our voice, what's our concerns, what's our disdain, whatever, our freedom of speech. And for you to say, "We're grandstanding," you still don't get it. Now, we have, if you look at the ordinance, we actually have, supposed to have five minutes to speak, but there was a compromise. At one point, they took us down to two. Then there was a compromise where they throw out on us three minutes. But let me just say this, um, there have been council people, you want respect, you gotta give us respect. I don't care if you up there, if you on social media, you know, criticizing, you know, spewing vitriol, uh, about the citizen giving misinformation, you know, putting it out there like that. So we have no respect for that. And I would still say that, um, there's a lot of racism going on, and when I see it, I'm gonna call it out. You won't be able to silence me. I'm gonna use my voice. If I wanna get, if I'm gonna get arrested, so be it. But I will call it out loud and clear. And there's a lot of racism going on in this community, you know, and we're gonna call it out. So you can do what you wanna do, but, uh, if you respect us and listen to us, because we come to you, we express what we want or what we need in this community, and you act like you don't hear us. So if you don't hear us, we're gonna scream it to the rooftop, you know? And sometimes that might have to disrupt your meetings, you know? And you, and, and then the council tonight talking about supporters. You know, I'm not gonna stand with anybody who's, who's, um, uh, making decisions that are racist. I'm not gonna stand with you. I would never stand with you. I'm gonna call you out every time. So you, like you said, if you don't, I, it's a lot of people don't like me either, and I'm okay with that as well. So, um, uh, I'm not trying to make enemies. I'm just trying to get you all to listen to the community. And you feel like it's just a few of us. There's a lot of us in the community that feel like there are a lot of- There's a lot of us in the community that feel like there are a lot of injustices and a lot of things that, decisions that you all make that are not in the best interest of our community. A lot of lies been told, like I said, you know, a lot of things going on where people are lying about what they, where they live and, and all those kind of things. So I haven't, you know, I, it's, it's hard for me to have a lot of respect for people who, um, don't, don't even follow what the, what the law that you all have in place right now. So, um, thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Fran Griffin.
Good evening, you all. It was a lot that I heard that was correct and it was a lot of things that I heard that were incorrect. Um, I just have a question, does my constituent, there's one thing that I actually agree with David on is we do have a constitutional right of freedom of speech. And boy, does that mean something. What I also know is Jamil was right, the council does have laws. They have ordinances in place to deter how they speak, what they do that's inappropriate in order to hold them accountable. So if we're going to, if, if the city of Ferguson council is going to have laws in place that they choose not to follow, when they clearly know that it's there, then that means we can just welcome each other like that anytime and that should be acceptable. But it's not. It's really not. Morally, it's not. Let me, let me, let me go further. It, it has nothing to do about whether I like you or not. I wasn't one of your supporters. I don't live in your ward, but I've never disrespected you as a black man, as a man, as a human being, period. And so your apology didn't include me. And I felt offended by that. Because these are people that have been fighting on behalf of people that look like you, that look like your son, that look like your son, that look like your son, that look like your daughter, that look like your daughters. For a very, very long time to even get you to a point where you sitting in this seat. I want to thank you for coming to the MPSC. Next term, I don't want to hear that you don't, you don't listen to Pat. Rather hear that you will take our institutional knowledge from the people that have been sitting on, on, in these seats, trying to work to make change on policy. Versus listening to someone who's, who hasn't even been here as long as these folks have been here working on this stuff. Respect does go both ways. It absolutely does. I take disrespect when I try to talk to my sister, Mika, and I see Nick sitting up here laughing. That's a form of disrespect. It's based off of perception. And if you want to deal with policy, then that, then there's a gray space there. Let's, let's clean that up. If I can't turn around and ad lib, when I hear something wrong and I'm ad libbing to the people, letting the folks know what's wrong, you right, the mayor does have responsibility. When the mayor hears some stuff that's incorrect, the mayor's responsibility is to speak it out during miscellaneous subsection. It hasn't always been us. And you were on this side as well, you should know more than anybody. Nobody gets to put their hands on my person unless I'm a threat. So asking somebody to come in and put their hands on some elders when there was a one-on-one confrontation between a citizen and a council person. You know, I talked to the, the police chief and this crazy, this coming from an activist. I asked him, I said, what would be your proposal on how to effectively address this? Because you know, I've been sitting watching, uh, processes, protocols and statistics and strategy for years. You should follow it. That'd be the most effective.
Wendell Phillips. Phil Burwick.
Thanks, Mrs. Mayor. Thank you, counsel. My name is Wendell Phillips Burwick. I was named after the abolitionist Wendell Phillips. You can call me Phil. I really appreciate the opportunity in our democracy to speak our piece. Um, the second speaker, before I speak my piece, I just want to give, I think the city should give a commendation to the second speaker, Larry Robinett. Mr. Robinett acquired a six million dollar grant for the citizens of Ferguson to be able to, to, to only pay a small portion to have hazardous trees removed from their yard. He deserves the keys to the city, I think. Ironically, that six million dollars is what, and more than that is what we, the city of Ferguson has coughed, coughed up to a past administration. Acquiescing to the consent decree. Um, I have found that many, many citizens of Ferguson still don't know what the consent decree is. I assume everyone in here knows, I, I wish I could turn around and address the ones in back of me, but I know that's not legal, uh, allowed and for good reason. So you can listen to the back of my head. Through high pressure from the administration of President Obama and Department of Justice, because of what happened regarding Michael Brown and the style of past overreach and profile policing, the city of Ferguson agreed to be fined for, right around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and agreed to the police force going through community police training. The police training was a good thing, but almost immediately the force had begun an immediate about face on their own. The second part of the decree, the heavy fines have not helped our city. They have hurt our city, hampered our cops from doing their job for years. The consent decree was not meant to better ourselves. It was to make an example of us. I'll go so far as to say to shame us. And six to seven million dollars later, it's to extort us. I've submitted a request through the Sunshine Act to discover where that money went. We made a few people wealthy. It should have gone to our schools, our teachers have suffered, the public's works, our police have been hogtied all these years. I can't understand why residents want to continue being punished. Maybe they aren't all residents who come here and speak their piece, who want us to continue being punished. Maybe they were like the white wealthy woman who left her seven hundred thousand dollar home in Chesterfield to come here and threaten you, Mayor, and the rest of the council. That if you end this, she can bring hundreds of people here. I don't think she gave half a heart for Michael Brown. I don't think she had any heart for Officer Travis Brown. She was there that day. Thank you.
Erica Brooks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I want to first of all say that, that, uh, half-hearted, it, it, you know, address, it wasn't even an apology. Because I was the one you gave a finger to. It wasn't all the other people that you were talking about. And for the people that don't understand why this disrespect has happened for a whole year. Not just that night when he decided to put his finger up. When he told me as a council person, when I was just trying to ask a question like everybody's saying about being able to just talk to you and ask a question about a bill seventy-two eighty-two. And he told me I wasn't talking about shit. That's when the disrespect started. So not only that, when the former council person, Linda Lipka ran up on my face, trying to tell me that she was not supportive, she didn't get you in office. But right before she left her, she bragged about how she was your, 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 your campaign manager. But she ran up on me and attacked me physically up in my face, telling me I didn't, I didn't get him in office. But all this Larry Robinett can say is that people like me have been disrespectful to council people for five years. But it's other people like Tony Burrell that was sitting in that seat that was recalled by Nick Cassoff. And I signed his petition, not just because it was Tony Burrell, because she was not speaking up for me as a person in her ward. So when it comes to talking about saving our bus route, Tony Burrell did not care about our bus route. So when it comes to you living where you live at, maybe her nephew's house or whatever, people cherry picking you to be where you at. Those people like you, like you're talking about the consent decree, we shouldn't have to sit here and be babysitted by overseers, by, uh, the Department of Justice. But that's what you all have brought us to that point. So we have people like you sitting in that seat taking advantage of the opportunity to be that black person supposedly speaking up for your supporters, but not understanding the, the content and the character of the consent decree is all for nothing. To disrespect me as a black woman is outrageous. Because all I do, I come in here and I ask questions. I go to you all to ask questions and we never get answers. Yes, we speak out out of turn because we never get answers. We get, you know, demeaning attitudes like, like yours. It don't make no sense. All we do is come here and stand up for our city as citizens, not come here to harass anybody because I haven't harassed you at all. Because like I said, from the point when you called, told me I wasn't talking about shit, this, they, us right here should have been making some ordinances for you telling me that. I had never gotten an apology for that. I never got an apology for Linda Lipka running up in, in my face as a council person. You know, and nobody arresting her for running up on me. But everybody in this audience can get on Facebook and talk about how, uh, I'm out of order, I'm out of line. But the thing to me is, when are you all going to get yourselves aligned and make ordinances for y'all behavior? And, and get escorted out here just like you're talking about us.
Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. Bye. Thank you. Thank you.
Last we have, Becca Bryan.
Becca Bryan, my address is five one six Jerryl Place. Um, I want to speak to the consent decree. The consent decree didn't just happen to Ferguson out of nowhere. It came because of what Ferguson did, what it allowed, ignored and defended for years. The DOJ didn't want to intervene, it was forced to because Ferguson gave it no other choice. This wasn't some misunderstanding. It was a pattern of abuse and corruption that had built up over decades. And now people are asking, why are we still paying for this? Haven't we done enough? But here's the truth, Ferguson lost the right to decide when it was done. The right disappeared because traffic stops became profit machines. When blackness became a crime and when injustice became the norm. Ferguson doesn't get to declare the work complete just because it's getting uncomfortable or expensive. That's not how accountability works. The consent decree isn't overreach. It's structure. It's oversight. It's the bare minimum to rebuild trust. It's here because Ferguson proved it couldn't be trusted to fix itself. And now the moment it gets hard, the moment it starts to hurt financially, we start complaining that it's unfair. That's not financial responsibility, that's moral retreat. Ferguson didn't go broke from the consent decree. It went broke defending injustice. The process is uncomfortable because it's working and that's what real repair looks like. It takes time, it takes money and it's supposed to hurt. Walking away now says the pain doesn't matter, that the damage is too inconvenient to keep fixing. And that's exactly how Ferguson got here in the first place. This decree is the receipt. It's the cost of what Ferguson did. And if this city wants to talk about integrity, if it actually wants to move forward, then the only way out is through, not turning around.
Public comments have, we move to the managers report. City Manager Hampton, do you have a report for tonight?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Always good to be in front of everyone. Uh, at first, I'm going to bring up Chief Doyle for his, um, update on Police Department.
Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Here to provide the report for the Police Department. Um, before I do so, want to echo Mr. Schropshire's comment. Thank you for, to your service to our community, this city hasn't gone unnoticed and good luck in your future endeavors. Uh, counsel, as always, I'm going to give you an update on staffing, talk about both part one, part two crimes. I'm going to, um, talk, give you a couple of case updates, talk about some traffic enforcement and some recent community engagement events. As it relates to staffing, uh, actually that should be eighty-five percent, not ninety-two percent staff, should be eighty-five percent staffing. Um, we were at ninety-two percent. However, since our last council meet, we did lose two officers and, uh, uh, one was for disciplinary reasons and the other one, uh, couldn't complete the, uh, probationary period for, uh, the Police Department. The reason that's important for you all to know is that, uh, FPD is not in a position to where we're just like, just hiring anybody now. You got to be able to understand the culture that's going on in this Police Department, you got to be able to fit in. And if you can't, I mean, then you can't be an FPD officer. Uh, that being said, um, um, as you can see, we still have six open corporal positions. And again, we haven't filled that yet because we still, uh, have police officers that are on probation. Uh, but those corporal positions would come from those positions. Uh, HR currently has the corporal exams in their possession right now. So we're in the, uh, process of trying to coordinate a, uh, a date that will work with everyone to, uh, have this, uh, test. The other spot that you see open up there is assistant chief position. Uh, again, uh, and this intentional, to be honest with you, uh, having appointed assistant chief yet or found assistant chief. Uh, because I haven't found anyone that I think would, uh, blend in, that I believe would blend in with our cities. Not that no one has been interested, but several people that's been interested in position. But, um, I see that position as whenever I do leave, there's someone who can step in and carry out the, um, uh, I guess the, the moral fabric of our city. Someone is going to believe in, you know, reform, that's going to believe in holding officers accountable, but also believing in enforcing the law here in our community. So, uh, as of this date, that individual has not been found yet, but when they do, uh, definitely let you know. As it relates, slides a little different from what I have. Um, as it relates to part one crime, it shows that we're down ten percent, we're actually down seven percent. Um, the biggest thing that you recognize up there is, uh, been a couple more, uh,
That's old slides.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, disregard this, this, yeah. Okay, all right. All right, sure. I'm sorry, I apologize. There you go.
Eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent, there we go, in the right one. So there we go, part one crime. So we're down seven percent as far as, uh, total part one crimes. Um, as you see, we had one more burglary this month, I'm sorry, in that, uh, in July than we did in June. And, uh, four more larcenies than we had in, uh, June. As it relates to part two crimes, again, we're down total four percent, uh, compared to the previous month. And as you can see, the large percentage changes up there as it shows two hundred percent, one hundred percent, two hundred percent. But if you pay attention, we've talked about small incremental numbers. We've talked about one compared to three and, you know, like I said, one compared to three. So the percentages look large, but we're just talking about a, a difference between a, a couple of different numbers there. While domestic violence shows that it's down, uh, in July compared to June. However, we still have a, that continues to be an issue here in the city of Ferguson. Our number, our officers respond to a number of domestic violence calls in our community. Uh, we do have domestic violence month coming up in October. FPD is in the, uh, planning stages of trying to do something, uh, that month. Whether it's a community conversation, we're not sure what that's going to look like, but we do need to, uh, that's an issue that needs to be addressed and talked about in our communities. Did have a couple notable arrests since our last, uh, meeting. Um, we had an individual, we, our officers got a call for stabbing at, uh, five-ten Airport Road, which is the E-Mos piece. The long, uh, short end of the story is that, uh, one of the employees there stabbed a unhoused individual. Uh, uh, the unhoused individual was actually, uh, was not being a cooperative, a cooperative victim initially. Uh, but due to Officer Wooder's, uh, strong determination to try to get to the bottom of the, uh, issue. Um, it was later discovered that the employee at the E-Mo stabbed this individual. Uh, this individual is going to survive his, uh, injuries. However, um, the employee was arrested for first, uh, sub first degree on criminal action and tampering with a, uh, with physical evidence. And is currently, uh, incarcerated to county and taken a hundred thousand dollar cash on a bond. Also had another incident. Uh, we got a call for flourishing in progress, um, thousand block of South Florissant Road, basically at the BP station. Uh, as the officer was arriving, the individuals, uh, abandoned the vehicle and took off running. However, within, uh, in plain sight, in plain However, within uh in plain sight, in plain view, the officer uh noticed a felony amount of uh marijuana laying on the seat along with uh weapons that was there. Um, again, those individuals have not been located and they abandoned the car, they abandoned the guns, they abandoned the drugs. And as of this day, no one has come to claim it yet. Uh, the other one I want to update you on is uh, we did have a uh domestic assault first degree. Uh, ninety-six hundred block of Abaco, uh, in this particular case, uh, individual shot his child's mother in the stomach. Again, she survived this case, however, uh, within twenty minutes, we were able to locate this suspect along with seizing the weapon that was involved. And this individual was charged with domestic assault first degree, physical injury, felony, and on criminal action. And he's currently being held at the county jail on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cash on a bond. Traffic warnings and citations year to date. Um, uh, as you all know, uh, traffic safety is a high priority for us here uh in the city and for FPD. Uh, totally, we wrote, I'm sorry, total engagements was two thousand nine hundred and thirty-four. Twelve hundred of those warnings, which made up about forty-one percent of the total engagement. And seventeen thirty-four, one thousand seven hundred and thirty-four citations were written, which made up fifty-nine percent of those engagements. And here's the year to date chart that would uh give you a picture of what's going on. Again, warnings were up a hundred and nineteen percent, uh, five hundred and forty-eight compared to twelve hundred. Citations were up forty-six percent, uh, eleven eighty-eight compared to uh seven thirty-four. I'm sorry, seventeen thirty-four. And total traffic stops were up sixty-nine percent to uh, um, I'm sorry, seventeen thirty-six compared to twenty-nine twenty-four. Um, and and the thing that really stand out more for me, and it should stand out for the city, is that um, we're over a hundred and nineteen percent in real, in regards to warnings. So that means that not only we enforcing the law too, but we're also trying to educate our public too on the traffic laws in our city. Failure yields, we're down sixteen percent for the year, and those other vehicles that failed to stop for law enforcement. As it relates to community engagement, uh, since our last meet, we had the bases and badges event. Uh, the Ferguson Police Department against the Berkeley Police Department. Uh, some of the proceeds from that was uh given to uh the Travis Brown family. Uh, I want to thank the mayor and the council members who showed up to that event and all our community people who showed up for that event. It was a great turnout. The officers appreciated, it was good support. Uh, these are things that our community need more of. We also had held an open house at the uh FPD. And again, it's just my idea to just opening up the Police Department for the community, you know? Uh, people pay taxes to the city. They should have an opportunity to see what their Police Department do. We had, it was a good turnout. We uh did some drawing demonstrations. We showed off the range, let some people shoot some tasers. Um, let them see the inner workings of the uh, the police vehicles. And uh, again, it's a lot of people that showed. It was a great time. Uh, we gave up uh a number of great uh prizes, uh, which I'll talk about here shortly. We also attended the uh Old Ferguson East uh block party. Uh, again, super turnout at that event. Uh, everyone's friendly, food was good. Uh, everyone seemed like they had a pretty good time. Um, we also had Walk Ferguson. Uh, we partnered, so we started the uh uh, walk and talk program, but we partnered with uh the Walk Ferguson Group. Uh, thank you Councilman um Franklin for for coming out that uh to that. But uh, it was a good event. Uh, we walked from the farmer's market down up there to the farm. Uh, I learned a lot of things during that walk. Um, it's good, it's a good times. Again, it was an event that um the community enjoyed and everybody got along. One of the other things that we're starting to do now too is that uh, when we started getting a number of complaints in, on a particular street or a particular neighborhood, we're starting to do roll calls out the street. So essentially what we're doing is taking our roll calls from the police station to those particular neighborhoods. And the reason that's important because uh, not only do we want the residents or the community to know that we're hearing their concerns, but we also want the people that are um not complying with the law, that's disrupting our community. We also want them to feel our presence out there in the community also. So that's the purpose of these neighborhood roll calls. Another event we got coming up, uh, September the twenty-seventh at FPD from twelve PM to three o'clock PM in partnership with the Neighborhood Police and Steering Committee. We're gonna have our National Night Out kickoff event, where we're inviting all the neighborhood associations to this event. We're gonna try to get everyone signed up for National Night Out. It'd be an opportunity for uh each neighborhood to uh, again, show what uh community looks like in regards to a partnership. And that night or the, I'm sorry, on October, the uh seventh, which is on a Tuesday, we will actually have the Night Out event. And the PD is planning on visiting all the National Night Out uh participants or neighborhoods that are gonna be participating in that. So um, last year was a great turnout. We look forward to even a bigger turnout this year. Officer Travis Brown update. Um, as you all know, if you've seen the news over the last three or four weeks ago, uh, they showed a video of Travis doing some rehab work at the facility in Nebraska. I just spoke with mom yesterday and she's in good spirits. Everything is moving forward with him. Um, as you can remember, you know, Travis is in a coma for two months, you know, when this all happened. For him to be where he's at today as far as doing rehab work is a miracle in a sense. This time, I'd like to call Ms. Laura Star. So on the PD, we started what we call a Chief Community Partnership Award. And essentially, these awards go to not only individuals, but businesses that really um, I guess, partner with the Police Department and do good things for the community. This year, the first one that we actually giving out to Ms. Laura Star, uh, manager of our Super Walmart on West Florissant. I'm gonna read this here shortly, uh, because it's important for people to know, but this doesn't do justice of what we do for the Police Department. Every event that we have in a community, when you see water donated, uh snacks, uh door prizes, uh, ninety-nine point nine percent of it come from Ms. uh Star at the Walmart. So again, we appreciate your partnership with us and what you do for our community means a whole lot to us. Thank you. But I do want to read this out there. So Laura Star, manager at the Super Walmart. Um, at twelve, story number twelve sixty-five. Team is grateful and appreciation for your demonstrated commitment to the Ferguson Police Department and our community engagement efforts. Through your partnership, you have strengthened the bonds between the community, the department, and setting example of true service and collaborations. With great gratitude and appreciation.
Thank you for that question behind me, so thanks, Sullivan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
All right, council, I'll open up for any questions or comments you have at this time.
I'm glad you've been uh selective on the uh Assistant Chief. But you're doing such a great job, it's gonna be some big shoes to fill, so. But I do hope you do find somebody. Uh, but I'm glad you're being selective because the culture that you have instilled on the Police Department is excellent. You know, like I said, when I was in Atlanta, North Carolina, I got profiled a lot. I don't feel that Ferguson. I feel like the officer would give me a fair shot. And I think that's because of your leadership, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Councilman Franklin?
So I had a question about um property damage crimes. Seems like that's our largest line item. What does that entail?
It could be anything from um lawn jobs to uh bricks going through windows. I mean, it could be a number of different, a host of different things. Essentially, it's property damage, you know?
Okay. I just wondered, was it like more random than?
Yeah, it's more random than anything. It's not like a, um, you got one person that's purposely going out doing different things. It's just, I mean, you can have a simple domestic that can turn into a property damage with somebody destroys somebody's property just because.
Councilwoman Noah?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you for the roll call meetups at the different locations. Uh, because I think that does make a difference. Residents call and they, you know, especially the one over there um off of Happing. That was good. We need more of that because it's it's hot over there. Haley and Woodstock as well, just a suggestion. But thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
I have a few more things, Mayor, uh, to bring up. My manager's report. Um, we are gonna have our dangerous building hearing uh towards the end of September. We're also doing a business license hearing. Uh, we still have some businesses that have not paid their business license. That hearing will also be in, did, towards the end of September. We've been having our nuisance hearings every Wednesday. Um, and we've been getting our administrative warrants signed by our judges through prosecutor. Um, so we are um making a turn to get some of our neighborhoods back in order. The other thing I have is I know Mr. Sharpshire brought up uh the garden. Um, I also reached out to the person that came to the planting and zoning and asked them to reach out to the other two family members uh that did lose their child. Um, and I don't know if that has happened, but I wish before he comes to council that that does happen because I do know some of the wishes of the family. Um, and I'm not sure they're all in a hundred percent agreement. So um, I wish they could uh get together before they bring it to council. The other thing is, the fire department did participate in the softball game as well. Um, I had a very crucial hit. Start the rally, want everybody to know that. Uh, and we will participate in National Night Out as well. Now, I know we've been having some discussion on daycares and how many daycares can be in award. Uh, I know we've had discussions on some of the EDST things that have been brought up. We also have had some discussion on bylaws and um, I would like to see if maybe we could do a work session on all these uh, and try to work it out and then bring it to, and then we can all vote, you know? But let's have that work session on these properties, on all these issues. And we can also talk about the properties that we do have and how we're going to uh try to get infield housing as well. And I think that's one of the big things now, right? We're we're making strides in the neighborhoods to clean them up. But now let's get houses built back on those vacant lots that we have, that we own and that are abandoned by the landlords. But that's all I have. Um, I would love to answer any questions.
Councilman Palmer?
Uh, in regards to the North Clay, is it a boundary adjustment and rezoning they're going for?
Just boundary. Um, but the question is, the really thing is, some of the family members are not a hundred percent on board and they lost their child. So I, I don't know. That's why I said please reach out and try to work it out before we bring it and just do it. Um, and I, I know personally myself, I put every kid in the body bag. And so I can understand where the family's coming from as well.
If the intention is to do a boundary adjustment but never develop either of the lots, why is a boundary adjustment required? Do we have an ordinance that restricts, restricts the planting of flowers and trees?
So I believe they're trying to make it so the house does not come on and keep the shed in garage. Is that correct?
My understanding that they're actually going to award the separate properties to the person applying for the boundary adjustments. So the lots would be split, the current owner would own where the garage and shed is. The person applying for the adjustment would own the other half outright.
So be split into properties.
From my experience with the municipal code and zoning, it is actually a violation of municipal ordinance to have a a lot with only an accessory structure. Is that correct?
I couldn't hear what you said. The last part.
I'm pretty sure we have an ordinance against having a lot with only an accessory structure. I I believe you have to have a main dwelling prior to having an accessory structure.
Unless it's commercial property, I believe you're correct.
It'd be something worth looking in, something worth looking into.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Noah?
No, it's a dangerous building hearing, yes ma'am. So uh, buildings that we feel that are structurally unsound, that need to be demoed and or a dangerous building where landlord and or the owner of the property could fix it up or being called into a hearing to, to, to answer further neglect. Yes, ma'am. And and will be posted. Um, I believe we have to also post it in the yards as well um of the property. And I think that we're working right now to get those signs. Though it may be the same day, uh, I know we're trying to do it the same day. Uh, I don't know where we settle that, um, but the, um, Zia is working on, no, not Zia. Autumn is working with Nadric on that portion. Zia is working with the dangerous buildings.
Two separate hearings, but we're with the same.
Yeah, two separate hearings, but the same day. No, it's an EDST. There is programs that Rachel brought up, such as the emergency fund, the housing. And I, I think it was something with education and there was one other one. Um, I know there was some interest from council and others about looking at at least two of those uh things, such as the emergency fund and the housing. Um, and I wasn't real sure if there was interest in the college fund, which I really did not see as an advantage for EDST, and I don't know if that should be really used from that fund. But we can look into that um more, and that's why I would love to have the work session on that. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, so right now, um, there's a couple of streets that we've done, um, that we've remilled, I'm sorry. Um, but the person, the company that put our original speed humps in owe us a few uh speed humps, and we're working with them. Cory's working with them right now to try to get them back out here and get the ones that we were owed. So um, that's what we did.
So Metalcrest will?
Well, I, I.
We don't know.
Yeah, I mean, Cory has a list and uh I can make sure, um, but I know like Thurman has it. Uh, and I know I'm going to Chesky Park and that'll be one of the biggest things that'll ask me. Um, and then, um, but I believe Metalcrest is on there as well, if it was just redone.
I mean, it was, and I'm just asking because the residents of the Forestwood meeting, they asked, and you know, and Metalcrest runs from Forestwood to um, what is that street? Well, Highmark, yeah, and the A S O is right there. You know, because I know that you had said that Ellison wouldn't qualify.
Yeah, Ellison's not gonna qualify because it's only really people that live on that street and it's a dead end because of gent.
Okay, but Metalcrest should.
Me- Metalcrest is a cut-through street. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Councilman Cass Off.
At one point, we had said that we were going to include speed humps in the contracts for streets that were being repaved. Did that happen on any of the streets?
Well, we knew that we had some, yes, it did. Um, if you go down Ruggles, uh, I think it's Ruggles that there are, Wygol. Wygol, they have theirs. Uh, there's other streets that that did happen, yes, sir.
But that wasn't in the contract for Thurman.
No, not, not that one, because we know we had speed humps coming. Um, and so I only have so much money and we know we had money coming in from that. So, or not money coming in, but we knew we had that expense that was already paid for. And then, so that's why we, we held out. Okay. Hey.
Okay.
That is all I have, but I do have one thing I would like to clean up on per section, the, the next section, uh, special presentation. That is all I have, but I do have one thing I would like to clean up on per section, the the next section, uh special presentation. Apparently Kurt Jerkins or Jergens, he is not able to make it on a Zoom and or in person tonight. However, if we could do the first reading, I will have him for the second reading to make sure that he can answer all this stuff. For everyone. This this is very common. Apparently St. Louis County is doing this uh all these uh actions. So uh I can have him here for the next the next uh meeting or when and or if the second um reading, I can have that meeting as well.
And that's bill number seventy-three, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Councilman Palmer?
I'd prefer we not do the first reading if the person isn't here. Uh the public, you know, they have a right to hear what's going on. We can't just vote on it next time with everybody in this whole room not hearing what's going on.
So.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so that's where I get confused because sometimes we hear that we don't say anything for a first reading, then we we talk about second reading. And that's that's why I said let's do the second reading. So I didn't know if we do have those discussions on the first reading, because sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, and that's why I suggested.
Traditionally, we usually don't discuss on the first meeting. And because the second reading has a first and a second and then a discussion. So if you all want to delay this, then put the motion on the floor. So when um Mr. Kurt will be here.
Yeah, we can't promise he's gonna be here. We thought he was gonna be here tonight, right? But we know that um we would hold off on that second reading until he does come.
But we can have the first reading.
And then.
Madam, I'd like to motion.
Uh uh Councilman Cassoff?
I move that we table bills seventy-three, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. And uh that we take up the first reading when the representative from the county is available to present the information.
Second.
Is there a second? It has been properly moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, if we don't, okay, I guess we don't need discussion.
Bill number seventy-three, sixteen.
Through nineteen.
Through nineteen.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. We have one day. Eyes have it. Okay, we move to public hearing. We don't have any. We move to the consent agenda. Uh we have city council meeting minutes, the regular meeting minutes for June the tenth, June the twenty-fourth, and June and July the twenty-second. I request a motion in the second to approve the minute.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. We have boards and commission meeting minutes. We have the civilian review board for July the seventh. We have the special business district for May the twenty-eighth and traffic commission on June the seventeenth. I request a motion in the second that the uh boards and commission meeting minutes be filed with the council.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. We move to appointments. At this time, we have an appointment for North County Festival Square for the community improvement uh district. At this time, it was Rachel St. Pierre had uh was on the board. And right now, we would like to appoint Dave Musgrave to take that position on the board. Is there a motion in the second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dave Musgrave will be off of North County Festival Square Community. I'm going down the line.
No, there was more than one appointment for this particular.
Other than Dave Musgrave?
Yes, so you're appointing uh James Otis, second, James L. Otis, and a
I don't have. Uh let me find a letter. Okay, it is. Okay. Dave Musgrave is one. Uh for reappointment is James J. Otis the second. Is there a motion in the second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The second appointment is James L. Otis to the North County Festival Square Community Improvement District. Is there a motion in the second?
Isn't that what we just did?
No, we did the Otis the second. Now we just have just Otis.
Oh, another Otis.
Another Otis. James L. Otis.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, we have an appointment tonight for Lynn Kenny to be appointed to the library board. That is a mayor oral's appointment. I am appointing Lynn Kenny to the library board. We have an appointment for Johnny Little to the Ferguson Special Business District. Uh is there a motion in the second?
So moved.
Second, Nacquita Noah?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. At this time, we don't have any requests. We don't have a proclamation. We don't have a resolution. We just move uh at this time, we have bill number seventy-three fourteen. And we have our prosecuting attorney here, Kristen Roberts. And uh the court secretary, would you come up for the bill? Yeah. Introduce your secretary, please.
It's my legal secretary, Viva James.
Hello.
She is a great asset to our office and uh has helped me uh throughout my time working with her. Good evening, Mayor Jones. Good evening, members of the council. Uh my name is Christian Roberts. I am prosecuting attorney here in the city of Ferguson. I've been in this position for a little over three years. Uh I am also an assistant prosecuting attorney in St. Louis County, and I've been in that position for over eight years. Uh I am here to discuss uh proposed miscellaneous health and safety offense fences ordinance uh that would in its proposed form fall under section twenty-nine dash three. I believe you have all received a draft of the ordinance as in its current form. Uh as you may know, there are similar ordinances that have been implemented in other municipalities here in St. Louis County. Uh the reason why my office is in support of this ordinance is because it gives us us more latitude in resolving cases. This would further allow for the consequences of the matters that we deal with to better reflect our community standards. You know, at the state level, we have uh and utilize alternative boards, diversion programs, restorative justice uh pro- programs in uh certain inappropriate situations. Uh in terms of implementation, this ordinance would be used only when disposing of cases and in which all stakeholders involved uh consent to this amendment to the original charge. So I just want to emphasize that this would not be implemented or issued in its as the initial charge. It would be uh a charge that we only use at the disposition stage of a case. So it's not, the goal of this is not to expand the criminal code here in the city of Ferguson, but just to kind of give us more um tools to use at the disposition stage. Um as I mentioned, like the alternative programs that we have, excuse me, alternative courts and diversion programs that we have at county level, it allows us to kind of work with defendants in our cases, the victims, anybody else who's involved to kind of come to a resolution that might end up for better outcomes for everybody involved. When we have cases in which unhoused individuals or young individuals make mistakes, um and implementing some of the fines or penalties that are available to us for a given charge can detrimentally affect them in the long run. Uh so the goal of this, like I said, is to just give us more tools to use uh just to help out members of our community and kind of help them not only when they're dealing with us, but going forward uh after they leave our courtroom.
Councilman Cassoff?
Yes, sir. Um there are decades of case law uh about unconstitutional vagueness. And the courts have been very clear that a that a law must be specific enough so that a reasonable person would know what is prohibited or required of them. This law is as vague as it can possibly be. And other than the fact that we uh have assurance from you that it's being used only for plea bargaining, the fact is it's an ordinance on the books in our city. And in theory, could be enforced against anybody for just about anything. It's been my observation in other jurisdictions that when a prosecutor wants to go light on somebody for whatever reason, a speeding ticket may become a littering offense for twenty-five dollar fine. Um I I look at CaseNet and you 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 often see people who have hundred and fifty dollar parking tickets. And if you look at the original ticket, it was a speeding violation and presumably you or somebody in your office pleaded that down. Why, in i- in light of the fact that you have the ability to plead down to other laws that don't put unconstitutional vagueness into our city statutes? Do we need this law?
Great, you know, I understand that question. I appreciate that. Uh in terms of the language in the in the proposed ordinance, I wasn't responsible for the drafting of that. Um I can speak to the the city attorney who who worked on the drafting of it in terms of its vagueness. In terms of the reasoning for why we want an ordinance like this, um if you look at section, I believe it's one dash fifteen that kind of talks about overall penalties and and the statute, there's specific um charges that are fall under certain fine penalties um and can be either five hundred dollars or depending on the specific penalty or excuse me, specific charge, maybe less in terms of the maximum amount. Uh or uh in in situations where it's up to a thousand dollars, there's potentially up to ninety days uh confinement that's available. So this would primarily be used in two circumstances. One, in traffic cases in which an individual has a a violation that falls under a minor traffic violation. Uh and the under the state statute, that would mean basically any traffic charge that's when a when applied would have four points uh assessed against the individual or less. Um and there's certain so some circumstances in which obviously people in the city and our community in Ferguson come from a range of different social economic backgrounds. And to penalize them with uh points on their license can detrimentally affect them in the long term uh in terms of costs versus a one-off fine, for example, in regards to kind of amending it down legal parking or something. In our proposed use of it in that regard is in situations where they may be um who might fall under a minor traffic offense, um but there's other circumstances that might affect uh how we view that case based on either their driving record or the specific circumstance in that case where we might want to assess fine higher than what we can under the current statute, which would be three hundred dollars for those minor traffic offenses. So this would allow us to amend essentially amend to the health and safety offense, but allow us to charge a higher fine in that circumstance. Again, it's always case by case. Uh in circumstances in which um I can give you an example, property damage was mentioned earlier. We had a case, uh I think it was a year or two ago, which an individual spat with uh his ex-girlfriend came infuriated and slashed her tire. Uh this individual, he was young, had no criminal history, he had a good job in working for the city government in St. Louis City. Uh and you know, based on basically based on a mistake, had this property damage charge that would have affected his opportunities in terms of his career going forward. So by amending it to a health and safety offense, um from my understanding, kind of talking to people, um it this on his record would look would would appear differently than a property damage charge or maybe an assault charge or something like that. Again, that would only be in situations where all state.
Well, you could amended it to littering.
The fine amount and and kind of our uh our ability or what we could do at sentencing.
Okay, so the purpose here is to allow us to charge a higher fine.
Not always. And for the property damage, that would be a different circumstances. I I mentioned in that example.
I I I I just remain, so so for those of you out there who haven't seen the the law that's proposed, it says it shall be unlawful for any person to engage in any conduct which constitutes a threat to public health, safety, quiet enjoyment of property, or general welfare. To me, spitting on the sidewalk could could you 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 could give somebody a ticket for spitting on the sidewalk. I I just feel like this is uh this is a very vague law that you may only want to use it for a certain thing, but it opens up the opportunity for the kind of abusive prosecutions that we're already trying to avoid here in Ferguson. So I I'm very concerned about it. And and that's all I've got to say.
Councilman Franklin, then Councilman Palmer?
Yeah, so this is one of the uh actually one of the few things me and Councilman Cassoff agree on. I don't like the language of the quiet enjoyment, you know, of property. That could mean if I'm in my backyard having family over, playing music loud, and my neighbor doesn't like the level of the music. I technically, by the way, the ordinance reads, I've committed a crime or a a a finable offense. So I'll tell you, you know, I really couldn't support the bill the way it's written because I don't know. Do you know how we define quiet enjoyment of property?
I'd have to look at the definition in terms of either in the code or in the state statute.
It's
Okay. Councilman Palmer?
My question here would be maybe directed more towards the city administration. Has the Department of Justice reviewed this and heard this explanation? That is, we're under, are you familiar with, we're under a federally mandated consent decree?
Would it violate the consent?
Are you familiar that we're under a consent decree for uh traffic for a variety of things? One of those things was using our courts as a revenue source?
Yes.
This seems kind of counter to that.
To me, it's a question of implementation.
Okay, can you explain for me? Can you give me an example of that then?
So I would say if we somebody had some traffic violation or some other by other violation and the goal of it would be to extract funds from them was the primary concern, then that would fall under, I guess, what you're you're getting at. But if the goal is, like I said, restorative justice, something more community based, we're trying to help all parties involved, it might be viewed differently.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Um for individuals, minor children under eighteen, what type of diversion programs do you guys have?
For minors?
Yes.
Uh typically, we rely on the family courts for those circumstances.
You mean you outsource it to the county?
Ooh, let me let me clarify. It's here in Ferguson, we work with everybody in the community, juveniles, adults. Uh typically, what we've seen in terms of juveniles, it's driving without a license or without a proper license. And so we work with them uh in those regards as well. We don't have a formal diversion program. That's what you're asking us. Uh it's al- always on a case by case basis.
Um well, I would like to see a diversion program and you guys uh hooking up with Flow Valley and making these individuals get some type of trade, plumbing, electrical, and it's mandatory. And so that diversion program will give them a skill so they won't repeat the offense again. And secondly, I see what you're trying to do with the bill that you're introducing, but it's vague. You you passed the bar. I think you should work with the attorney or put it in your language and bring it back to us. And I think I would be willing to go for it if it's in your language. It's hard to defend something that someone else wrote.
I see.
Councilwoman Covington?
That was what I was gonna say that uh David uh mentioned. Can we reword this and and bring it back?
I'd be hoping that kind of.
Is it a consensus of the council to have our prosecuting attorney to simplify the language enough where it will be? To simplify the language enough where it will be. Readable, acceptable before we go to the first reading.
Clarify more so.
I think it's more, it's it's more than that. It's not, it's it's real simple. It's just.
It is.
It's a um I think all we need to do now is just well, I'm I'll make motion to remove it from first reading and then they can come back. But we can have a discussion about it. Is that okay? Cause we gotta get it off the agenda.
Okay, that means we got a lot of stuff we move in on first reading. Okay, put the motion on the floor.
I move to re. I move to remove Bill seventy-three fourteen from the first reading this evening.
I second. On what grounds?
Uh on the grounds that uh I believe it's unconstitutionally vague. And I would like for our legal department to do additional work on this bill.
Okay. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. So prosecuting attorney uh Roberts. Could you please work with attorney and come back?
Yes, I'll speak with the city attorney and speak with and come up with a better draft of this.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jameson. Appreciate you too.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move to. We took Bill seventy seventy-three sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. Uh they are also to come back later. We move to bills uh requiring second reading. Bill number seventy-three fifteen, I request an emotion in a second to read the bill a second time. And place it upon his facet.
So moved.
Second, the Queen of Noah. Attorney Ryan, could you please read the bill? City manager?
Yes.
Mayor Council, uh this we do every year. Um and this is a formality.
That it is. Any other questions? Here none. Clark Pittman, could you please call the room?
Councilman Cassoff?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Franklin?
Epstein.
Councilman Palmer?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Noah?
Aye.
Councilwoman Covington?
Aye.
Bill number seventy-three fifteen passage. Uh we move to any unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Councilwoman Noah?
Thank you, mayor. Okay, so um I don't, so for clarity. This is regarding the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars that was earmarked to FNIP. From the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. I just want to ask the attorney. Is it legal to appropriate that money to FNIP since they changed their bylaws?
Could you uh say your question one more time?
Is it legal to appropriate the money, the taxpayer funds to FNIP since they changed their bylaws? And they're their own entity. During the budget session, the council voted to um approve three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. From EDST funding to Ferguson Neighborhood Improvement Program.
I want to take uh look specifically uh at the question to see if it violated any specific ordinances. I'm not aware, but that doesn't mean.
Okay, just more clarity on that, cause there's still a lot of question.
Attorney Ryan, let me answer that question for you. Uh the FNIP bylaws were sent to Apollo. Apollo did a blue line through the bylaws. He gave, he sent them back to council. We have not had an opportunity to look at the bylaws. I was gonna refer them over to the work session. So that's where we're gonna have the discussion. Okay?
Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? We have several other bylaws, like the library bylaws, that need to go over to a work session. Any other unfinished business? Councilman uh Williams?
Um the removal people on boards, can that be done now with the motion? Are you gonna handle that later?
I've got some more work to do. I'll handle that later.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh any other unfinished business? We move to new business. I sent out an email. Asking the council if we could take September the ninth. And s- instead of having a meeting, we will use that as a work session time. There's quite a few economic development sales tax programs that we need to discuss. Then we have the daycare information that needs to be discussed. We have more than a FI FNIP bylaws that we need to look at. So do we want to take September the ninth and use it as a work session? That'd give us two weeks just in case we come up it with anything to move to the September. What's the second meeting?
Twenty-third.
The se- September twenty-third, where staff can do their work, we can do our work and move it. After the work session or anything come up that needs to be in the ordinance, we have it in September the twenty-third. Would that work? I would like to make a motion that instead of September the ninth being a regular meeting. We take September the night as a work session to look at EDST programs. The bylaws of in the board and commission, the daycares of. City manager, you have anything else? Okay, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. We move to. September the ninth as a work session. N- new business, what? We, do we want it to start at six o'clock? Okay, we'll start at six o'clock. We'll start at six o'clock. Uh we've been having conversation on emails. About a removal of a person from the boards in the ki- the commission. I'm gonna grant you this uh Councilman Franklin. That I did have conversations with. Councilman Williams, I did not have a conversation with Erica Williams. I'm asking Erica Williams.
Brooks.
Erica Brooks, I'm sorry, Erica Brooks, to call my office, set up appointment time for us to talk. You sit on the board, you sit on planning and zoning, and we need to have a conversation. Call my office to set up appointment time for our conversation. Uh in the meantime, city clerk, would you get in contact with? The mediation people? Point of order, point of order. Would you get in ta- contact with the mediation person so we could coordinate this meeting? Uh it's it's been brought to my attention that the mayor should have a meeting with any board or commission member. That has had any inappropriate behavior. And you and I need to meet. So just call my office, set up a time, we call mediation, so they will be there in the midst of the conversation. And I'll bring the fines back to the council, but then I'll make a ruling. Okay, thank you. Any other new business? We move to miscellaneous, new business calls, we move to miscellaneous, starting with Councilwoman Covington.
Um, thank you for you all coming coming out. Thank you for all your comments. Um like I say, I always uh listen. Um thank you for all the invites to the different um meetings. I think I've tried to. Think I missed one, but I try to attend whenever somebody send me um. I'll invite to show up at a uh board or commission of meeting um. And have a good week.
Thank you, Councilwoman Covington. Councilman uh Franklin.
I don't have much tonight, but I just want to thank the community for coming out and I want you to know that I'm gonna always advocate for the people. You know, even if it's not appreciated by all parties, that's what I'm here for. This seat belongs to you, so. I'm gonna keep doing the work in war too and throughout the city. Thank you.
Councilwoman Noah?
Okay, thank you. Well, I have quite a bit, cause at the last meeting, I didn't get to say my miscellaneous. And everyone knows that I like to speak through miscellaneous, so thank you, mayor. First, let's go back to the Fourth of July. Thank you.
We don't have to go that way far.
But my miscellaneous, we do. Thank you to all the organizers, the contributors, all the Ferguson staff, the parade participants and the watchers. The Ferguson Fourth of July Parade and the fireworks event was very well organized and planned. We appreciate your effort and look forward to the next Fourth of July Parade and spectacular um event in one of our. In Ferguson's, one of Ferguson's, excuse me, one of Ferguson's premier parks, January Wabash. And also another congratulations to the Ferguson Fire Department on their one hundred and twentieth anniversary. Um the Forestwood Neighborhood Neighborhood Meeting will be the first Tuesday of August on the first Tuesday in September. It will not be on Zoom. It will be in person at Emma's Bible Chapel, nine hundred Highmont at Hornet. The Ned's Ben Newton Meeting will be tomorrow, Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, in Ned's Ben Newton Park at six o'clock. Please bring a lawn chair. Hopefully, our FPD can show up to report. Um Forestwood Park, there has been some concerns about Forestwood Park. And I do want to thank staff for uh meeting and addressing those concerns. The trees have been trimmed. There's a sign, a man's sign on the bathroom door. The residents are looking forward to the park being painted and you know, when the weather changes, I know right now that's not gonna happen. But thank you all for addressing that in a timely manner. Congratulations to the Ferguson Fire and Police Department on their softball win against Berkeley Fire and Police. Hopefully, you all will play that game again, not against Berkeley, but against someone else, cause you already beat them, so we don't want to play them again. Okay, all right. Kudos to the entire Ferguson staff and our PIO Consent Decree Coordinator, Ms. Patricia Washington. Lisa Stevens and the FPD Lisa Stevens, who is the FPD trainer, on their progress towards compliance and completion. Of the consent decree and um you know, the city has worked very hard to promote a positive perception of Ferguson. Post-two thousand and fourteen. The city of Ferguson has made a remarkable comeback and forward progression in our police department. And business community to name some, among other strides throughout the city of Ferguson and the administration. As an elected official, as an elected official, I don't condone bullying residents or business owners. The residents are why we are sitting in these positions. We are here to serve and represent. Yes, I support Ferguson businesses and I also support respecting citizens' first amendment rights. If we continue to remain silent, that means that we're guilty of being complacent. History does matter. And yes, elected officials are held to a higher standard. And I do appreciate Councilman Williams apologizing, because I asked him to do that. And I do appreciate that, because there's nothing wrong with apologizing. Okay, lastly, public comment needs to remain where it is on the agenda. Because many residents come just for the public comment and they leave, they don't want to stay through the entire council meet. And we shouldn't force them to do that, because again, we are here for the residents. You know, if it wasn't for the residents, then what would be our purpose of sitting in these seats? You know, so I just think we need to stay grounded in why we are here. There's a lot going on on a federal level and it's flowing down. And um just understand why we are in these positions. Um taxpayers fund the city city. Octavia, thank you for your service to Ferguson and good luck to you. Today is Women's Equality Day. And just one last thing, I don't know if it's true what the resident said, but I would like to hear more about that six million dollar grant for the trees. Okay, thank you all. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Noah. Councilman Palmer?
I don't have anything this evening.
Councilman Cassoff?
I yield my time to Councilor Noah.
Thank you. Councilman Williams?
All right, so what was it about two months ago? The whole FNIP thing. Um the lawyer had looked over at that time. And he said it was nothing wrong. And we want an oversight that we could look over their books at any time. We voted for it unanimously. I don't know why we're going back on that. So I mean, everybody on this council have used the FNIP except for Palmer. It's a good program. And so uh my neighbor, the one that passed away, I was talking to his wife the other day. Cause she had some dead trees in her property and about to hit my house and my pool. And I said, have you heard of FNIP? She said, yeah, I use it for my driveway. I'll, you know. Had no idea. And then the neighbor beside me, her wooden fence is falling down. And she was like, yeah, I'm I'm gonna get FNIP to help me fix my fence. So you know, I think it's a good program. We already had the lawyers look over it. And we unanimously agreed on it. I don't know why we're going back on that. My my last comment, um the only board I'm on is the Ferguson Youth Initiative. And when I first got elected, my email did not work. Um for months, weeks at a time, so I I never got in contact. With the Ferguson Youth Initiative guy. So I think it was fifth, maybe about April or May. And I contacted him. I said, this is my personal email. This is my personal phone number. This is passionate to me. He never contacted me back. So I went to a neighborhood associating association and it was a young lady who was a representative. Of Ferguson Youth Initiative. And I went to her and I said, hey, you know, I contacted him. He hasn't contacted me back. She was, oh, he's busy. Let me get your information. Again, gave her my personal email and cell phone number. Haven't heard anything back. So I'm realizing they don't want to work with me because I might have a different political affiliation than them. The 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 whole reason I ran for council is to have a seat at the table to give the voice, the voiceless a voice and the underserved opportunity. That's why I went from uh uh a lot of money at Boeing to childcare. And I'm realizing I don't have to be on a banner or a flag. I can do it myself. So starting not this Saturday, but next Saturday, I'm gonna be at the community center tutoring the youth. From eight to ten, K through twelve, and even college courses. It doesn't matter if it's calculus. Biology, chemistry, whatever, bring your child to get tutoring. Also, I've been talking to people, citizens. Uh I don't want to mention their names. I don't know if they want me to put their names out there. But one citizen said, you know, I want to do a a jobs program to teach people how to dress, how to interview for opportunities. Had another citizen, hey, I want to teach people credit, first-time home buyers, things of that nature. So it takes a village and I don't have to be under one flag to help underserved people, people look like me to get ahead. So not this Saturday, but next Saturday, I plan on meeting at the community center for two hours. Bring bring your child. If they're having hardships in school, it doesn't matter what subject it is, I'll tutor them for free. And don't don't just bring them for two hours to get them out of your hair and I'm a babysitter. But if they really need help in a subject, it does not matter the subject. I was a computer science um tutor in college. So you know, the subject is not too big for me. I can do it. It was something that, yes, sir. Uh eight AM to ten AM. I'm still trying to work out the room situation, but eight to ten. Every Saturday. My wife is like, you know, you're trying to save the world. What about time for me? But it's bigger than hers, bigger than me. And you know, if you want to volunteer your time to help tutor some of these children. Or just be a mentor. Uh like I had Mr. Jerome, who's a air force veteran, come to my daycare and speak to the kids. You can't be what you can't see. College is not for everybody, you know. Trades, electrical, plum, they make more than doctors. But my generation, you need to go to college, you need to go, that's not necessarily the case. Mr. Jerome, I'm pretty sure his checks look. Mr. Jerome, I'm pretty sure his checks look really, really good from the Air Force. That's another outlet for these kids to, to be in. So it takes a village. If you wanna come and volunteer your time, so that's what I wanna do, cause I don't go on Facebook anymore because it's toxic. But one lady was like, he said he's gonna work with kids. I haven't seen him do anything. In some regard, she's right. But that's not because I haven't been trying. The people that have these established organizations that deal with kids, I guess they get grant money, they wanna keep it to themselves, but that's not what I'm about as far as the money. I really wanna help these young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Um, Dave Musgrave?
I just wanted to publicly thank Octavia for her service and let her know that she'll be missed. That's all.
City manager?
Again, Octavia, you will definitely be missed. Uh, your smile, definitely. But also, I just want to also let you know that Ferguson Fire Department did respond yesterday to the explosion.
What did they?
So the cause that I believe is still under investigation unless it came out today, that I don't know. Um, but Ferguson was a big part of it. Um, and actually, we put some of our, uh, command staff in other fire districts to help run mutual aid. Um, I ran the, the city and a lot of mutual aid companies, um, that were moved up to our area that don't know our area. Basically, almost the entire county fire departments were up in this location, whether it was an annual strike team, uh, strike team for heavy rescue or, uh, a strike team for ladders and or pumpers. So, um, we're very, uh, organized, um, and we know how to run a scene. So, um, it yesterday went very well. It was a bad, uh, a bad scene, but it, you know, our training kicks in, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, city manager. Uh, Attorney Ryan? Okay, um. Okay.
Um, so I wanna thank, uh, Dr. Fields and Dr. Lammers. Uh, they did the right thing by letting my son retest. And, uh, he did pass the verbal IQ and the written test. And so a lot of times if our, if our kids are given an opportunity, they will excel. And so he, by the time he is in the twelfth grade, he'll be taking AP Calculus. So they gave him the pre-exam to see where he's at. He scored a hundred. And so like I said, he is autistic, but he's very smart. But the, these young people need opportunities to excel. That's it. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Uh, just before I close out, uh, to the council, Octavia is leaving. We love you. We're gonna miss her. However, I've got two appointments I would like to make. Uh, Levine, London. Levetta, I call you, your sister. Okay, Levetta, London. I would like to appoint her to deputy clerk. What is your favorite counsel?
I so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. London, you are now our deputy clerk. The second appointment is to appoint David Musgrave as interim clerk.
Interim?
Interim.
Temporary.
Interim clerk, what is your pleasure?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have a deputy clerk. As you know, Ms. London has been sitting there with Octavia. And, uh, she expressed that she wanted to learn more. And we're happy to have you to want to learn more, so. And to Octavia of twenty-two years of, uh, clerk, eight and a half, twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-five, eight and a half of those years here in Ferguson. We are going to miss you and we thank you for all the service. And we, we, we are cooking up something for you, but I just don't want you to know right now. And I would just like to say, um, I don't know if you've noticed that you've been going into gas stations, you've been seeing the video slot machines and people playing those slot, slot machines, uh, we've getting a the increased number of kids going to play those machines. So that's where I was at this evening with you.
Playing slot machines?
With the Missouri Municipal League working on a policy that we could bring to Jeff City about those video slot machines, also working on a policy for, uh, Centipede Five and juveniles, because right now when a juvenile, uh, has committed a crime, only thing that police can do if they go, if they don't get points, they could get twelve points. And if they do a felony, they will get those twelve points. But if they steal a car or break into somebody's house, they go to the police station, the judge doesn't give them a point, the police have to release them to their parents. And half of the time, the police have to drive that kid home. So we are drafting a policy to make some changes in that juvenile system. So if you have time as a council member on September fourteenth, the Missouri Municipal League Annual Conference would be held across the river. Do come and sit in, uh, the classes where all these policies are going to be brought up and hopefully we could get them through to Jeff City. In addition to that, I just hope July twenty-second has been put to rest and we can move on and do the business of this city. At this time, I request an emotion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Have a good night.
Yes, ma'am.